States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. I already gave the little bit of an announcement that was kind of personal. Nope. Um, we're good?
All good.
Consideration to approve the minutes for the March 5th, March 12th, and March 19th Board of Directors meetings.
Judy?
Call in favor? Okay. Standing. Oh, you had your hand up? Sorry. I didn't see it. Consideration to approve the proposed agenda for the April 2nd Board of Directors meeting.
Dawn? Olin?
Those in favor? We are going to come back to the student report because she's at practice. So Finance Committee report?
Sure. Similar finance report to what we've had for a long time. State subsidy's been received and recorded. You have this front of you. Our net revenue has grown. Our operating revenues continue to exceed our expenses. Our expenses continue to be in line with our budget. Food service has caught up. You can see by a fair margin. They will continue to gain ground as we move throughout the year and receive reimbursements. And adult ed revenue exceed expenses. Expenses are in line with our budget. We are in good shape financially. This report was through February 28th or eight out of 12 months. Two thirds of the way through our year. Doing well.
Alright. Um, Construction?
Construction, I can take down one as well. We had a one item agenda basically was a discussion of possible generator funding at our middle school. So I can just read. It's a little lengthy. The committee discussed the middle school generator. The original estimate from emergency management team was half a million dollars with 125 of local funding via by the school or the towns. That caused concern initially for our construction committee and the committee decided not to move forward with the generator in January. At the February 5th meeting, Nancy Perkins asked that we discuss it further at Construction. And at the February Construction meeting, it was requested I send the briefing document that the emergency group created to our entire school board. I have sent that document around. That document suggested conducting a load analysis. Danny, I got you, with our local electrician. And at the March Board meeting, the Board approved conducting a load analysis with the emergency manager group paying the hundred dollar fee. At the March Construction meeting, the generator discussion continued. And Nancy requested again we do the load analysis and have conversation with the towns. Other members wanted to have more information. I had concerns about putting that large a cost in the school budget. You'll see my budget presentation later. We are already up a substantial amount. We are defraying some of that with fund balance. I'll steal my own thunder later on. We'll be up 3.05 percent to the towns as it is using a fair amount of fund balance. To add any amount for the generator did cause some construction members concerned. There were other concerns that the facility might get overwhelmed with the generator load. And another thought that the community town hall should would be close to the homes of people and they would be more appropriate spots for local shelters in times of emergency. So the next steps were for John to gather additional information. I literally spoke to him this afternoon. He is working to gather. I don't have any additional information to add. As soon as I do, we can discuss it again at Construction and see where we're at. But right now I have nothing beyond what I just reported.
Alright, Curriculum Committee. Sue?
So we were super excited to have Technology Director Matt Brown join us. And he did a virtual presentation. He talked about our technology plan where it's our vision, where students are engaged and empowered and prepared for their future careers in college. We chatted a little about assistive technology and how can we use technology devices? Things like screen readers. Computers are all able to communicate. Ways that we can do that to equalize learning for all students. He also shared about some of the technology programs that we're using. Reach My Teach, Google Workspace, which includes lots of pieces. Class Link, which is our new single sign-on program that allows easy access and increase of security. CSO, which is a digital portfolio tool. We talked a little about artificial intelligence, AI, and how there's a lot of power there, but it also comes with a lot of challenges and trying to balance that. So we're still, we're just on the path to how that tool can be used appropriately. We talked about digital citizenship. That too is something that changes and we're learning and growing. How do we make sure our students are making safe choices? He shared a couple of the really fun tools that we have, which are the Merge Cube. Said so many Board members, thank you so much. Our teachers and students were so impressed that so many of you were able to join us at the kids teaching community night. The Merge Cube was one of those tools. But students are able to hold it in front of a laptop and then it feels like they're holding a harp or different things. And at the end, Matt left with, we are still struggling with device care. That idea of what might be a malicious device break, what might be accidental, and trying to make sure we're minimizing off-task device usage.
Thank you.
So I'm Chair of the Curriculum Committee and I just want to note that I was at that meeting and Matt Brown shared so much info with us. And there were so many acronyms for all these programs. And I was like, oh yeah, I feel like I'm 90 and I've never turned a computer on, right? Like there was so much information. And then I went to the kids teaching kids night and we saw a lot of that in action. And it was really impressive. Some of the things that our students are getting to use at pretty young ages, like some of the stuff that they were doing with it. It was pretty awesome. So. Good to see it, like actually see it working and not feel like totally out of touch. Watch Carl use one of the little robot things.
They could teach me, I'm telling you.
Anyone can do it.
It was great. They really were. They were super passionate and our teacher should be proud of our students here. That was a tremendous showcase for our kids. They were great. A super night.
Alright. Any other questions? Wellness Committee? We didn't meet. No meeting. Okay.
So we're gonna reschedule that meeting after the Youth Wellness Day, April 11th, so we can debrief that.
Alright. Um, Lake Region had no meeting. Oh yeah. Just here. You wanna do your student report?
Oh yeah. Good evening. Congratulations to Cody Taylor. He won a national silver medal in the Solastic Art Awards for his large ceramic piece, Guardians of the Cascade. Only a few students are selected nationally out of 110,000 teens. Senior to display the 3D projects to students, staff, and families on March 21st. A successful career day was held today. The whole school is able to visit different careers in the fields of agriculture and wildlife, engineering, construction, banking, healthcare, insurance, manufacturing, and the military. All jurors will take the science M E A on April 7th.
So just to pause on Bridget, it's the Cody Taylor who saw the, I think Sue sent it around? That piece, just to say it was beyond impressive. I think the level of award there of getting silver out of 110,000 teens. Did you go to MECA, T M E? Yeah. I don't know if you wanna take a moment. It's a beyond tremendous award.
So he was one of five in Maine. So there's five, I think, that were selected from Maine, Cody being one of them. And so we were, so I may be biased a little bit, but we were able to see three of the other, well, they were all different media. So three of the other projects that were also submitted and received an award. And Cody's was just amazing. I think Sue may have mentioned him bringing it at some point and so that you can see it. Because you really don't get, it is somewhere up here, I think. You just don't get the, yeah. It's just, he's an amazing artist. He's really probably got a pretty bright future ahead of him with that. And he's currently working on, and he's creating it all himself, a fountain. So he's got a four, I think there's four tiers to it, and he's got water in. He's trying to figure out how to make the pump work. Last I knew, last week, he almost had it, but the water was going everywhere. So I think that's a bit of a problem. But he's just, just the work he puts out. And to Shailin's credit, it's not just him. There are a lot of kids in that art program who just, who just put out amazing work. And she does a great job even for someone who, like me, probably couldn't do much more than a stick person. She just, she has a, she does great with work with our kids.
So, oops, sorry.
Do we know, will his work be on display at the district art show?
It will.
Which is a good plug for everyone to attend Saturday, May 3rd. It's a huge event if no, if any of you have never been.
That's very nice.
Really well attended. It's at the Austin Fairgrounds. Artwork on display from every student in the district, right? And sometimes more than one. And the biggest problem if you're a parent is that you have to hunt through all of them to find your students, which is genius, because everyone looks at everything. But yeah, it's pretty cool. So we can see it there in person, live and in person.
Yeah. We'll be there along with a lot of the other works that were featured at MECA.
So Bridget, thank you for giving the shout out to Cody. And Cody, I'm sure you're watching, if you are. Family members, congratulations to Cody Taylor. Silver medal. Tremendous accomplishment, Cody.
Lake Region did not have a meeting. Next meeting, April 10th at 5:30. Bell Ed, no meeting. Next meeting, May 27th at 3:00. Policy.
So the work of the policy committee is in front of you for the first read. So we were advised, the guidance from Donovan Woodson and Emma Smae, to revise our policies around Title IX. So in front of you for first read tonight are AC, ACAA, ACAB. We are continuing to work on the procedure part of those. We have some questions that we wanted to refer back to our legal team for some additional guidance. So those will be coming to you at a future meeting.
So action items are consideration to approve the following policies as first read. AC, non-discrimination, equal opportunity, and affirmative action. ACAA, harassment and sexual harassment of students. And ACAB, harassment and sexual harassment of school employees.
Judy?
Second.
Dawn?
Discussion? No? Just kidding. All those in favor of approving those policies as first read?
Okay, thank you everyone.
And consideration to approve the following policies as a second read and adoption. KDB, Public's Right to Know, Freedom of Access. EEA, Student Transportation Services. EEAB-R, in parentheses. What are the parentheses for, Sue?
Because it's a changing of the class, the naming of the policy.
Okay, so formerly known as?
EEEA.
EEEA-F-R. Video cameras on transportation vehicles procedure. EEEAEF, video cameras on transportation vehicles. And GBJ, Personnel Records and Files, second read and adoption.
Can I clarify that? It was formerly known as EEEAB. It is now known as EEEAEF-R to mirror?
Okay. I had it backwards. Got it.
We never, we always had a procedure. We never had the policy. So, and then we're renaming it to match the recommended naming profile from our legal team.
Motion to approve those. Sue?
Dawn? Olin?
All in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Superintendent?
I'm very brief this evening. Until we come out of executive session, we'll do the budget. But just a quick report of transfers and appointments. Madison Buzel from Grade 3 to Grade 4, effective next school year, just an internal transfer. Millicent Ostkowitz, Middle School Track. Dan Bartlett, Middle School Track. Carter Blanger, Middle School Track. Sam Willey, Varsity Softball Assistant. And Josie Nielsen, Middle School Softball Coach. All appointments for the upcoming athletic season, which has now started. And no resignations this month. That's all I have. Sorry. Except my crickets.
Alright. Um, consideration to enter into executive session to consider expulsion of student pursuant to one MRSA subsection 4056A.
Judy? Dawn?
Those in favor?
Wes, in favor? Executive.
Wes is in favor. Go wait for camera to leave or be off.
TV 2, sorry for TV. Alright.
Okay, back in session. Consideration to approve an overnight trip to Acadia.
If we give the motion second, yeah. Olin and Dawn. So Mr. Gubowski, how do you, and I'll let Brett go. Brett, you're here.
So I sent Superintendent Landry the summary of all the, you know, relevant facts about this. It's a small group of students, two teachers. They have an opportunity to have accommodation at a cabin. It's actually in Orland, but to do a weekend trip to Acadia National Park. Through the, this is like the outdoor adventure club. It's three students, two teachers. And they're proposing to leave after school on Friday. Transportation by private vehicle, which is compliant with our policy with two school staff members in the vehicle with students.
And just, they're staying two nights? They'll?
Like Friday night, Saturday night, coming back Sunday, midday-ish.
Questions? Discussion? No? Alright. All in favor of approving an overnight, er, Acadia National Park?
Alright. Thank you all so much.
Consideration to allow the Hoxsey Scholarship to distribute two $500 scholarships to the class of 2025.
Judy? I missed the second. Susan? Got it? So this is, I guess can, yeah, this can be me. So whenever people want to deviate from the main community foundation, what's allocated, what's allotted to that program, they have to request to the Board to do it. That has been requested. Instead of giving one, they'd like to give two. They requested it go on the Board agenda. Comply with the wishes of the family to put it on the Board agenda.
Questions? Discussion? What's the criteria?
So, that's a good question. I'm not sure what the criteria for the scholarship is. Miss Landry would be better to tell you the exact criteria. But Bill was a longtime science teacher here. I don't know if it's about going into education. If you give me a minute.
I believe it is.
That would make sense. And I can get it up in a minute. So I'll circle back to the criteria. But originally Maggie had set out for one $500 and Karen asked that they give out two this year. So can you please ask the Board to give out two? The criteria, and I'm gonna.
Alright. Um, all those in favor of approving two? Alright.
Thank you. No, no, I'm good. I can try to do two things.
Consideration to authorize Superintendent pursuant to 1485-4 of the main revised statutes to transfer money between budget costs center lines in the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 budget.
Motion?
Yeah, I need a motion.
Olin? Dawn? And so yearly, we do this, end of year spending sometimes. So the taxpayers authorize the school board to move actually over 5% of money. We don't do this a lot, but if in one year, I'm making up something, but there's an expense in maintenance that we'd like to tackle on this fiscal year, and there's additional money in regular destruction for whatever reason, this authorizes the thoughtful expenditures of funds at year end. We've done this every year for the last 10 or so years. We plead taxpayers' watching, Board. We still don't overexpend a budget overall. This just allows for a little flexibility between 1 through 11 in terms of our articles. But it doesn't authorize any more expenditure than the taxpayers have authorized.
Would it be then reported to the Board when money is transferred?
When the, at the audit process, they do report when transfers have occurred. Yes.
Other questions? All those in favor?
Thank you.
2025, 26 budget review also.
This is definitely me. So maybe we'll see an aunt who wanna sit on the other side.
I'll just turn this a little bit.
Either or.
And we're gonna hear it again?
Yeah, you'll hear it another time after this time. So any folks watching on TV, we've done this with the Board. Not at all. I just wanna shut the lights so it shows up better. So I can talk, well, I just end the sentence. Say, I can talk. I can talk, thank you all, quickly through what's going to happen. There are 11 articles that make up our school budget. So I'll take you through the 11 articles. You'll see a couple votes, folks that have an agenda, folks in front of you. Subsequent to this, we'll have a vote to eliminate the position of full-time high school math teacher, do change in local conditions, and to add the position of grade 8 teacher. And that's because those are different impact areas in our collective bargaining agreement with the teachers. There's a couple other teacher transfers you'll see. Why aren't we voting on those that within the same impact area? So there's a special ed move and a K through 8 teacher move. You won't vote on those later. At the end of this budget review and those two positional moves, you'll vote to approve the budget and sign, allow me to sign, or you all sign, the warrants that we posted in the town for our budget meeting and then for the budget referendum to hopefully pass the school budget. So I know you've heard this, probably more than once. So I'll just take you through. I will go a little quickly, not dwell on things as much, but just take for the folks watching. Here are 11 articles that make up our school budget. The primary reason for the increases that you'll see on every line. Our salary and benefit increases, I think our Board, our select folks, our staff certainly. We'd like to be competitive with other districts. We'd like to keep, try and retain quality staff to our school district. So that'll be a big part of every line. Our benefits, we're anticipating will go up significantly. We don't have the final number from Anthem, but our experience rate at last check was 155%, which means Anthem spent a dollar and 55 cents for every dollar we gave them. So in the insurance world, typically that doesn't work out well with your rates after they've paid out more than they've taken in. So those are a big driver of almost every dollar of increase that you'll see. Additionally, paid family medical leave, 0.5% payroll tax. Doesn't sound like a lot, but on 10 million or so worth of payroll, it's slightly more than that for people fact checking, about $50,000 in PFMO tax. So here's the additional grade 8 teacher. So we have 61 students leaving grade 8 going to the high school, which also makes sense with the high school math teacher reduction. So we'll go from four math teachers to three at our high school. This is sort of, for the taxpayers watching, a one-to-one switch. We're adding one, we're reducing one. So it's a cost neutral move, but it is a change in impact areas, which is why you'll vote as a Board afterward. Another one-to-one switch, additional intervention teacher at our elementary schools. So we're like, our kind of, it's not exactly the elementary level, but our alternative edge program at our high school and our program here that we have to support some learners that need additional supports. We'd like to add that position in our elementary and we'll reduce down to four grade 4 teachers in our middle school. Again, cost neutral. Those are both within the same area of K8, so it doesn't require a Board vote. Extended learning opportunity teacher has been a great experience for our students. Getting out, exploring careers, writing resumes, going to companies, doing internships. So this has been previously grant funded, 70% this year or so approximately. We'd like to pick that up and it's been, it's just been super for our kids. I know it's a tough budget year, but it really has been a pretty great program. Article 2, Special Education. It's up the highest percent, I think, almost nearly 10%. Four additional ed tech positions. I said this the last time. I think when I started this, there were 17% in special ed. And when Jana presented State of Schools, 31% almost in our elementary, 27% in our middle. And the special ed students have even higher needs. So Jana's done a wonderful job going position by position. Four additional ed tech. And out of district tuition increase, again, sometimes that's not even on, sometimes students move in. Sometimes other agencies place. That is a significant cost. One child can be up to $100,000 for an out-of-district placement, which is more than 1% to the local taxpayer. It's a huge risk every year. We'll fund it out of fund balance, at least for this year, to defray some of the costs to taxpayers, but it's always scary for us. Three state interesting clients instead of four, so you'll see a reduction. Every year, we plan for additional ed techs in case state interesting client students come. They haven't in 10 years. So we went from four in cases to three in cases. But revenue expense both went down. It's really a nothing move, but just in full transparency, we budgeted for one fewer in case. And there's our move within impact area, K-12 special ed. So our middle school special ed teacher, we'd like to add there 95 special ed students at our middle school and a reduction of a high school where there's only 48, just need based, based on numbers, just as a switching of position from high school to middle. Article 3 is the best. It doesn't cost us anything. Lake Region book. Article 4, extracurricular and other instruction. Don't have a lot to report. I won't dwell on. Small increase. Student and staff support, again, another small increase. Our team, Matt Brown, Sue Day, done a heck of a job. MLTI, device purchases, fully funded. This year, we'll buy new devices for grade 2, fully funded through the MLTI program. You'll see that on our revenue slide later. System admin, up 35,000. 13 of that is an increased audit cost. Accounting software and school board dues. The rest is just in that first line. School admin, I don't have a lot to add here, up 44,000 for the reason you see there. Transportation, negotiate bus contract increase is close to $40,000. 1.2 million-ish, 3% increase. This isn't $40,000 and the reason is, we reduced a potential van purchase. Sue's done a heck of a job. We've negotiated the new vans we've received for like 42,000, 43,000. We had 50 budgets, we reduced by five. It's fund balance anyway, but that's a 5,000 reduction. And private source, we've been budgeting 30 for a long time. And again, it's out of fund balance anyway, but we haven't spent close to that. So we reduced that by 20,000 to 10. So up 40, minus 25 here, we're up about 50. So that's that slide. Facilities, we've all been proud of the work we do here. Heard another person say, your high school looks brand new. And I think we try and focus on all schools. They do a good job taking care of this school as well, even though it's a 1967 high school. So we're gonna continue that great work. Thanks to the Board for supporting that. Our last payment, the revolving renovation grant, 527. And property insurance, you've seen some of the disasters across the country. I think that's going up everywhere. If you look at your own home, property, house insurance, certainly you'll see a significant increase. Now, it's not the same dollar value that we pay as a school, but percentage wise, I'm sure your home insurance is going up too. Debt services is the best, the top line. Keep saying it. I feel gross. We didn't really reduce 41,000 worth of value. The state pays for that top line entirely. It's our middle school. It'll be complete November 27th. But what the state has to pay is 41 less. It looks like I've read it's 41 less. It's not really. They just gave us 41 less. They pay 41 less. That really doesn't have much to do with us, except we record it. Peggy does a good job keeping track of all that. This is true. We completed our ADA elevator project. We paid our last payment in November. We are down 44,000. We did fund balance last year. So it's not really a decrease to taxpayers because we used our savings to make the last payment anyway. So all told, down 86. Another great line, Sam Wenzler and her team deserve a ton of credit. They are now operating the Black and Food Service for years and years and years. We did a 35,000 transfer out and put money in this line to subsidize food service. We stopped the transfer out and we're not even paying anything out of this line. So that's a great job for our team through reimbursements from the state and being fiscally sound. There's all the, I need to read that to you. That's what you just saw of our totals. Our total budget, 17.5. And the revenue side, we'll take a quick second. State subsidy was reduced 78,000. For those of you that checked me, I said this last time. It was really reduced by way more than that, Carl. But if you go back to that, you don't have to actually go back to stay, but the middle school bond is a 44, 41,000 reduction. So it's not really, they just, we never got it. It always went to the kid for kid. We lost 78,000 real. It will look like 119 for the fact checkers. It's really about 78,000 reduction subsidy. SAC and Main Care were reduced slightly. Actually, we saw an article literally, I think, the day after we had this talk that we're a little worried about receiving Main Care funds moving forward. So we reduced that by 10. But 100,000 from SAC and Main Care billing. Jana and Colby, PEGB do a great job working on that. MLTI mentioned in Article 5, buying grade 2 devices. We'll get reimbursement for those. Other revenue, we've invested our money that's in our bank account that we pay out of. We've been able to negotiate a pretty good rate on that. I think it'll probably go down, but I think it's certainly safety saving. We can get 90,000 on interest. It might be more. That may be a conservative number. But certainly it's a good place to be. Our last payment for revolving renovation grant, you saw in the maintenance article, 527. We'll pay that out of fund. Our last payment for revolving renovation grant, you saw in the maintenance article, 52-7, we'll pay that out of fund balance. Our SROs, we now have two, I know the board's thrilled, I think our community's thrilled. We've been looking for a second one for years and years and years, it feels like, I think it's probably actually a year or two, but it feels like forever. We love the police presence in our schools, they've been great for our kids, our staff. We'll fully fund them out of fund balance, under 2,000. Budget offset, this is new, we want to be responsible to our taxpayers, provide the best education, so we use 550 of our savings account, bring that increase to three, but still provide what our kids and staff need. Out-of-district placement, I mentioned that's way up, we'll fully fund those out of fund balance theoretically. Eventually those students graduate, and you won't need that out-of-district placement money. However, I don't know, we've been seeing an increased need in that area. Capital projects, so the stuff that goes away, pay the parking lot lunch, you put new lockers in once, it's gone, you pay the bill. Great use of fund balance. SAC ed tech expense, we used to budget four, this is Article two, in case the kid come. We've never used this in 10 years, we reduced this by one ed tech, down to three, but it's an in and out anyway, it doesn't really affect the bottom line. Fund balance contingencies, there's 100,000 in Article one, regular instruction in case, 200,000 in Article two, special ed, which would be our biggest worry, something could happen, and 50,000 in maintenance. We have never used that 350, take the 350 at fund balance, put it in case, year ends, put it back. Put it back, Andrew, at the optimal answer, the answer was a great question, just the same 350 in case. No, we put it back on our savings, we use it again, we've done that 12 times in a row. Van and private transportation, that's the one who reduced the van cost to 45. Great negotiation to get them, we've gotten them both for under 45, and we haven't really used the private source, so 45 in vans, 10 in private source. Local contribution last year, 35-7, thank you to our towns, our communities that support our school. Tax increase, what we need to make the 17-5, 255, 153, which is 3.05%. State mill expectation, that's set on our 279 form that we get from the state. Total valuation is set by the main revenue service, so if you take how much we need, divided by what our town's worth, if we were all one town, we'd be up 3.05%, which is at $23 on 100,000. We're not all one town, thank you, Miss Day, get the underlying message. These two towns are up the most, they were going to take the tax increase the worst, they'll be more than 3.5. Hyrum's the best, not because I live there, we didn't set that at all. I'll tell that joke one more time on May 5th. Hyrum will come out the lowest of the increase. Change of valuation, so this is hurting us a little bit too, I mean, our valuation is going up significantly, which requires tax, additional taxes from our town. Increases, so when you take those numbers and distribute it out, Corsh and Parsons, as I mentioned, will be the worst in terms of tax impact, 4.8553, but three of our towns, 2%-ish or less, Hyrum under 1%. And you can see all the mill impacts on 100,000. So even our worst town, $41 on 100,000, would be the mill impacted this much. Oh, federal funding, yeah, so new information comes out every day. There was something today, Miss Day, about the bar grant, that we might not receive it. So current MSMA guidance is we will continuously receive federal dollars. I've told this board, these all together are close to a million dollars, bless you. We believe that we are going to continue to receive it. Department of Ed, ESEA team currently has not been eliminated, it's congression funded. We should anticipate a small reduction, we hope of 5% or less. If those were all to go away, that would be tough on us. This is this one, and this one, and this one, and almost all staff members that we use federal dollars to supplement our budget, not supplant it, but supplement with additional resources to support our kids. It would be very, very tough on us if they eliminated. I have no news that they're planning to eliminate, but yes, that would be worrisome. Nutrition services, we already lost this, which is about $14,000, Miss Day, local food grant, and the state slash, I think, federal government's pushing CEP. I don't know what impact that'll have, and the great news I just read on Article 11, in terms of reimbursements, but for right now, we're staying the course and feel okay. Is that it, Miss Day?
Yeah.
All right, so there it is, and there you've heard it, you've heard it again. That's the budget review though for folks watching. We'll do this again, upcoming dates, May 5th at 7:00 PM in our middle school cafeteria, which is what you assigned tonight, that's the motion you're going to make. We'll post the warrants in the towns, again, I see people taking out pens, great students in here. May 5th, 7:00 PM, middle school cafeteria. I will do that exact conversation for our entire community, anybody that would like to come. And hopefully, our townspeople will approve this budget. And then on May 20th, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, I guess, again, May 20th, 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, there will be the referendum vote. This year, there is an additional vote about continuing the budget referendum process. So I think a yes vote continues the referendum process, where we vote, a no vote would mean the budget meeting ends it. So a yes vote means you need to do a referendum, a no vote means it ends on May 5th, not this year, but for future years. So it's a two-vote referendum this year. Does that cover everything, budget review is done, the positions we talked about, approving the budget, next steps? Yes, that's, I think, everything budgetary.
Ready to move on? Consideration pursuant to 20-A MRSA subsection 13-201 to eliminate the full-time position of high school math teacher due to changes in local conditions.
Dawn. Olin.
Anything to add?
No, it's just basis. Yep, numbers-driven decision, and from a cost-neutral standpoint, the numbers will drive the addition of the grade eight teacher that you'll vote on next.
Okay, those in favor?
Thank you, good, okay.
Consideration pursuant to 20-A MRSA subsection 13-201 to add the full-time position of grade eight teacher for the 2025-2026 school year due to changes in local conditions.
Judy.
Second.
Dawn. Again, numbers-driven, 76 versus 61 eighth graders.
Those in favor? Consideration to approve the 2025-2026 school budget.
Dawn.
Second.
Amanda.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Thank you. So here's the motion below, and I shouldn't, I shouldn't tell you about this, but this is the one that's going to make you sign like 80 sheets of paper. So warrants for the town to call the referendum, warrants for the budget meeting, notices of amounts, so this vote does all of that. It sets the budget meeting date as May 5th, it sets the referendum date as May 20, and it allows for the notice of amounts for the municipal clerks to post in their town. So that's a, feel free to take it from here, Chair, but that's.
Can I just read this?
You can, absolutely, consideration to.
Oh, Judy.
I was just wondering if the chair would like to say as written, rather than reading the whole thing?
Defer the chair.
I would love to do that, I was gonna, Amy was gonna read the whole thing.
Amy.
It'll save us all the hassle. You all can read, and we've done this, most of us have done this before. So consideration to approve following motion. I'm not gonna, I'll read the motion, but not the full thing. A move, that the vote entitled, "Vote to Call and Approve the Warrants for the Budget Meeting and the Budget Validation Referendum and to Authorize the Notice of Amounts Adopted Be Approved in Form Presented to This Meeting and That a Copy Said Vote Be Included With the Minutes of This Meeting." As written.
Second.
Missy, who's second?
Amy.
Amy, thank you.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Thank you all very much.
So we're good with that, everybody, don't, having said that, don't leave when we adjourn, because get out your favorite pen, we're gonna sign a lot of copies. Okay, consideration to accept nominations and elect a school board chairperson.
I need a motion, will you? Keep the ones we have.
Olin, so we'll do one at a time, Olin, so I assume that means, Olin, you're nominating Missy as chair.
Yes.
Olin nominates Missy.
I second that.
Seconded by.
I haven't said that, but I just saw Amanda's stage that gets, I'm like, well, now I'm saying three people.
So we have an Olin motion to nominate Missy as chair, with Andrea seconding that motion.
Okay, we have to vote on that motion before.
No, I think any other nominations. So then, what I need is Missy to accept that nomination.
Yep, I'm honored.
Missy accepts the nomination.
And then we vote?
So.
All in favor, we're voting.
Wait a minute, one second, Missy, before you go. Do who, did we, so Olin at that part, but we have to originally move to accept nominations. Someone needs to motion to do this process.
I move.
Amy moves to do this process. Dawn seconded, so now, so now you've got to approve that, sorry.
Those in favor.
Of doing this, yes.
For doing it.
Okay, so one more time, Amy moves to accept nomination to elect a chair, and Dawn seconded, and everybody approved. And now reiterate, Olin, I assume you still nominate Missy. Andrea, I assume you still second the nomination. Missy, you still accept, now they vote to do that.
Maybe I shouldn't accept this.
My fault. Everybody's, so Missy is our chair.
We'll get it right for the next.
No, it's my fault, I did that wrong. Now we've got to accept nominations for the vice chair.
Okay, consideration to accept nominations for vice chair.
I move.
Wait, this is just a do it.
Just to do it. Judy ain't gonna. Do it, say it, Judy.
So Judy's gonna say we're doing this.
I second it.
Missy's saying we're doing it, now we need to vote.
All in favor of electing a vice chair, okay?
Now we do, huh?
Now you can nominate someone.
All right.
I would like to nominate our vice chair to return for another year.
Judy nominates Amy. Missy seconds that. Do we have any other nominations? Amy, do you accept the nomination to be vice chair?
I am honored.
Amy accepts the nomination. Now we need to vote.
All in favor of Amy being vice chair.
Amy is vice chair, congratulations to both.
What do we get? Meeting adjourned, but you can't actually leave.
But sorry for TV, TV two, have a great night, thank you so much, everybody for watching.